Well, we had a Fiat on this yesterday. Today, we have a Millestrata. Delta Foxtrot 66, Papastri uniform is in charge. On the 33. We have an unusual appearance, I have to say. Being on, coming for an eco, but... But the reason why I'm going to be doing this 33 is because it's been made apparent that also on the 33 is, well... There's a driver on the P S U that was very good, so... Thought I'd go and do that as well. Off we go. At least it's in plain white. So I'll take that. Well, this isn't mine. It illustrates that they're not doing Christmas tickets along with Nottingham City Transport, but Turnpike and I are doing their red ones for this festive season. So there you go. See if Turnpike are doing the same, but... Yep. Actually, I'd love to pay for it. If they got the white buses on it. Which in fairness to the 33 they have... I mean, one's actually an eco, probably has a temp fire blend again, but... But there's not really much to see there, I'm honest. I'm going for this, it's, uh, generally... The reason why I've chosen P S U and T N K is a bit more exciting. A bit more bumpy and exciting. There's not many seats in this one that there anymore, there used to be, but... But two of them got removed. That's sent you files on the Skylink Nottingham. Nice to see that there was a Fiat on this yesterday. And actually nice taste from Melamirk this time. Goes well with the City Yard Merc that's on the one ahead of it. So I'll take that happily. You'd often associate Strata as being on minibus boards for the 33, but... The City Yard Merc's got that. As it's so, as they so often do. Although this service was once, I was on the City Yard Merc was on this service once. So it can happen, but... Uh, with the City Yard Merc, they tend to work on the, uh... I tend to find the City Yard Merc tend to work on the minibus boards when they're needed for the 33. So yeah. This is, I'm actually only going to do two videos today, and they aren't going to be 33 related. To go with the other ones I've got. And then there'll also be full journeys as well for you, a little up. So, uh, yeah, they'll be, uh... They'll be pretty good. Again, the 33 is short of Ecos today, but I think... Though there will definitely be one on the other one, I know that. I know there'll be definitely be one on the other 33, that's for sure. Because I saw it yesterday and I've no doubt it'll be back again, F D E Z could be. That's going to be back again, I'm sure of it. I last saw this on the 510 511. On the same day as Y Y D was operating it. That led to, um, that part of it led to T N K being on the 33. Oh, good. Ah, so all the gas will gear there, wow. Roving in. Huh, plane me bills suns out, huh? Saying ho, 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 I guess. That's an older style Strata, this one, the old lego on the front, um... I believe Mansfield still has E X G. At the moment. Nice, nice blue lights up there. Easy. Oh, this... Hang on. I don't know if it demonstrates that as fold seats, but... Yep. If this belt wasn't twisted anyway. Maybe having a better... What's he doing now? There we are. Sorry. Tried to. And no design fault seats, actually. I thought they were. It turns out I'm incorrect. Yeah, my first thing goes, it's not working very well. I was always trying to... Twist a little bit. Yeah, twisted that. Yeah. Good now. So, next is... I actually think this is faster than the, um, V A G Cato from yesterday. And maybe a bit faster might mean maybe past swatting inside him. I don't know, we'll, we'll see. At least I'm on the bumping up again today. I'm only decided to go on it again because... There's a driver that knows me on there and, uh, I thought it'd be rude not to ride it again. If he was in charge of it for most of the way. So... So that is why you're seeing a video on this Strata. To Radcliffe. And then be going back to Radcliffe, from Radcliffe on the, uh, on the, uh... We're live, Merc. What we've got here... She's taking camera work. Oops, apologies there. I, uh, just apologize for the edited second part. I copped up the camera a little bit. I, uh, forgot which... We slightly edited, do apologize in advance. What you saw there though... Was a Nottingham Fiat over there. Now I'm going to use Movie Maker for this, so well. I think it was on a Nottingham on demand service, that one. I couldn't see which one it was, I'm afraid. Spot must this one. Nice bell, indicator's working up there and it's red. Old style red indicator. I was looking at this on the day today, so what I could do... If I pop up the camera. Me being a more brain dead moron. I was going to say we're going to have temporary lights here, but we're going through them, we're almost in one. That didn't take long at all. I'm also expecting, as I say, there to be an eco on the 33 coming through eventually, so... It'll be, uh, interesting to find out what that is. First you do it now. Save our airfield. Yeah, do that. Save our airfield, save our airfield. No one is taking the airfield away. No one. And I tell you that now. Airfield means planes. This is so fast this time. Seat belts must be worn at all times. Okay, we have now reached Cockgrave everybody. Cockgrave again. Open, reach busy. And there's all the cemetery, there's a cemetery in there and church. This is a long way around Cockgrave, by the way. And it looks like we might be preparing for a stop. Very soon. What's the indicator now? Maybe, maybe not. Yeah, here we go. Wait for it. There we go. Lights up. Single siding door. Single siding door. And a beep as well. That was day or side, we often take the 33s too. Or they'd say we are doing the full section. Uh, just because, um. Uh, just because I want to, uh. I want the City of Armagh again, so I'm, you know, I just want the City of Armagh again. Because there's a good nice driver on that, that's all. The driver's good, yeah. Now I'm with B. The exact point where, um, when, where, when I was on TNK last time, I passed FTD on the 33. But this time, we've got DJF running this one. So, um, FTD's not there this time, always DJJ. Oh, FDX. Looks like I picked a good choice of 33 by the looks of it. See this DJF on there? That's the rare green dog race bin by the way. So that'll be a couple of trains on the 33 now. And that was C, and that would see DJF, um. And that would see DDF and PSU come in allowing for, um. Uh. Um, SVU and FDX to drop out. What the gate they now onto anyway. Have a roundabout. That's strange. So there's one Econnect that was running yesterday, if I remember well, now there's another one, except it's on the Centre One place. Okay, now I don't know. Some strange short formations lately. Unless it's due to operational reasons of some kind, which it might be. Probably could well be to do with that. They're short forming some 33s. Oh, I love this bit, chicane plus. Chicane. And there's a nice long straight. Then through chicane. Straight. And then through chicane. Then. Let's draw that, and there's a junction might. I can see the pylon again. As you can see, I'm on the one of the lower seats today. Actually get a good view of DJF by the way, actually, that's good. Through Highland. Yeah. Under the A46. You're going to see another pylon in the distance in a minute. So I've got one over there and there's another one of the same size. Not bad for Minibus wall covered, supposedly, uh, or Econnect wall covered supposedly. We tend to often see a lot of views on the 33, I know. I don't know if you can see it, but there's the other pylon. Teleform wasn't enough. There it is, just in there. Must have been again there. As you now, we're going to do. Okay, we're going to go up. Go up to the second floor. Let's go up top now for the rest of it. Having a bit of fun on both, both levels. Don't touch anything with one hand. There we go. What we're also allowing me to do now, I'm on this way, is show you the two left seats on the back, over there. There you go. The advertising on this one is, uh, on the, is the former one for Onot Hill House. Apparently. Here we are. Nice one. You know what we're going to do next? We're going to get a cab view. We're going to have a cab view of this, um, strata. Very soon. It's your balance and only do it from where I am since. Unfortunately, it's had to remove the two rear seats there, which is a little bit unfortunate, but you can't win them all. I see this interior is the, um, I've seen two more of these different to the other Mercs. Here we are. Get a cab view. Very nice. Nice blue lights there. Yeah. There's the right turn. There's a window. It's kind of droning away, so I can't be, doesn't say it that much. But there is a window, you have, that you've got. True glass mirror. Here we go over the A46. Look on, near horses on both sides. So certainly does not hang about. But as we come near Radcliffe, I shall leave it there. Thank you all for tuning in. This video on the 33, full section again. Oh, nice looking colour band there. Have to say, having done a, uh, strata map before on this time, not bad all in all. But my next video is going to be on one of the best. But after this, I'm going to be doing a video on one of, uh, literally the best, TNK again. Oh, I'm really fortunate filming on that again. That was, that was pretty good last time and if there's anything to go by, I have no reason to think it will be as good as, as good as that. Tight. Yep, times and tree cutting. Access to, got access to A52 from this road and we're near Bingham. Not far from there, but near Radcliffe still. So seatbelts must be worn at all times. Though. Though on this one today. I have. What I'm going to do here. Is undo it. So if you have a full view, you have. That we have got on this objective Minibus. From this seat. So let's have a look around. Do this one first and see what we've got. Well, it's okay, so what have we got? Well. Over here is the emergency door. With LEDs below. Almost, this is like, almost like an airplane style where you've got lights. Exactly do not directly to an exit. Sorry, that had to be trimmed a bit there. Small wheel arches there, as you can see. Your. Keel seats. And if I can demonstrate it, also got the seatbelts pressed down. And if I can demonstrate it, also got the seatbelts, press down to insert, press down to reject. And you'll come off like so, like I've demonstrated there. These are sort of like coat hangers. Wow, interesting. And I sent me, yeah, that's all I need. I do need to go to Radcliffe.
What, to Radcliffe?
Yeah, yeah. Cause that's where I'm gonna be joining TNK from. That's where I'm gonna be joining TNK from. Of course, that's a bit boring, ever. So. Interesting. But this one we did a real good clean, good green. I mean, what's that, is it? It's winter again, isn't it? Uh, needs to, oh, it's going to Mars, it's easy to go through a jet wash. Being that dirty on the back. I bet you would agree to that. So, it's. So after this has dropped me off at Radcliffe, this will be then going to Morrison's. Empty, then we'll be going back to Radcliffe to then pick up the next 33, that will be the final one to Nottingham, then final one to Radcliffe before it then heads off empty. And if I have got time, we're gonna watch this bus head out. So, oh, here we go. Press the bell one more time. Very nice indeed. And here's the blue one, let's see what it does. Very much different. So, sorry, just going to quickly cross over the zebra, the zebra crossing. And then we'll see it do a bit of the old departure nonsense. Good man!